Folks, please stand up and join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we get some new faces in the crowd tonight. Thanks for attending the August 24th meeting of the Town Candidate Go Planning Board. Let me go around the room, introduce those of us who attend this meeting regularly. Starting at my far right, Kim Berger, she's our Remote Access Facilitator. Our Secretary is General Vitella. Board Member Scott Neal, Board Member Amanda Van Laken, Board Member Bob Of Course, I'm Chuck Euler. This is Shawna.
Bon Chat.
I don't want to butcher it.
You got, you did it right every time.
And she's our town planner, of course. And then Chris Nadler is our Board Attorney and Lance Brayben representing our Town Engineers, MRB. If we should have an emergency, folks, there's two exits, my right and left. Please use those if need be, hopefully we don't have to. What we'll do tonight, we have an agenda, hopefully everyone has one. We will follow the agenda as published. We will, each application asks the applicant to make a presentation to the board. And once the applicant has made his or her application, presentation, the board will ask questions. And have any comments on the application that's submitted? I will then open it up to the public as far as anyone in the audience, in person or virtually, to any questions or concerns they may have. And then we'll go back to deliberating among the board. And hopefully, all things being equal, we can take a decision tonight and act on each application. If you want to speak.
Oh, we do.
We do, okay.
Yeah.
So, as it's been put into position, if you want to speak, please go to the podium. Give us your name and address. Try to keep your presentation, questions to three, five minutes at the most. And address the board with your questions and we'll try to answer them or at least consider them in terms of what you presented. Tonight, we have three public carriages. They're all new, they're regarding subdivisions. And they have been duly advertised in the Daily Messenger. That we can attest on August the 17th. So. Everyone, that's what everybody know about the, new to be here tonight, I know. I will now open the floor up to privilege of the floor. If someone in the audience would like to address the planning board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, whether you be here or out in the Zoom land, please get our attention and now's the time to speak. Anyone in the room or out there? Okay, I'm assuming everyone's here for a particular application, so let's move on. Our first public carrying is Veneti Associates, representing Gregory and Beth Westbrook owners of property forty ninety-six on Linda Drive. Westbrook's are requesting a single state subdivision to subdivide a current parcel of seventeen point eight three nine acres to create three lots of various sizes, the largest being thirteen point eight five five, the smallest being one point eight seven four acres, and I might as well launch the other lot, which is two point one one acres. I will now open the public carrying and Anthony Veneti, representing Mr. Westbrook.
Yes, so the planning up front today is a three lot subdivision on Linda Drive. The three lots will be accessed by an existing private right-of-way that runs through these above parcel loans from down in this edge. Once the board, lot, this lot here is a current home that's on this lot that accesses the right-of-way. And as well as Mr. Westbrook's main house parcel that home accesses. So it's, it's two new lots with the existing house being included. All the lots are within zoning, they're accessible by public water and public sewer. There will be some divisions where the light weight that need to be drafted once sewer and water are going to be brought to site. But currently, the existing houses that are there have access to the sewer line that runs along the north. They're on the western of the north, Mr. Westbrook's and also Corey Westbrook's house in the south accesses off of a line that runs off of Carolyn, which run, running from the south to the north. Water is also accessed off the private just from those houses. So one of the might be, we would, we would do the same sort of thing when we do those pieces and get water sewer to these houses of any potential development off those system lines.
So those easements are to be determined?
They're, they're to be determined. They will have to be, I mean, we can put them in place, which we're more than likely we will need to, so we have that access. So that can be done, but we do have access to public water and sewer.
Are all the roads, it just, it exists right now?
Everything that you see that is in this, this is the current driver that comes up, there's a driver that accesses to the north that accesses the barn. The, these are two Ashley's house accesses here, it kind of cuts across, so we have a couple of easements that we are in the process of adjusting to make sure everybody has the proper, proper access to this stuff, you know. She does have, this lot does have these that runs across here, goes water and sewer. Sewer goes here and water comes in off that line as well as the communication. And all those exist, exist.
We make it so we can see it lower.
And then that's Corey's, that's Corey's, this is the subdivision.
But that's all, this, oh, that is all.
That's, that's.
That's a final one, yeah.
So these are all private service lines. So it's no consolidation into a public council or a board.
It will go to public waters or a couple of easements. There's no direct route through the property to get to public waters that would require. Which we had to put in place for Gray's house across the writers' one property, also Corey's across Gray's and across that. And those are all filed.
Anthony, is there plans already to build houses?
There is not.
Just, just so.
This is.
No plan.
No.
And then accesses will be created for the private driveway.
The access even is, the right-of-way is, is, is in place, the right-of-way, this right-of-way already is needed and to, right, nationally, and then these other lots would be included.
So, I think we're gonna, I forget what we put for, what we did actually though. But now that you've got five lots potential for more, I think we need to make sure it has real shared use obligation. Sort of like a very mini HOA.
Like a small maintenance agreement?
Yeah. But just so we don't run into the same, same issues that on Linda Drive that, so maybe you was right, it's a down. What are all the complaints that the people have on our little? I think it's, what can we do to put it right in for what that?
Has the maintenance agreement from Linda shown okay?
There is a maintenance agreement, it's a, it's just a right-of-way.
Handshake, I, all I know, right?
It's just a access.
You were gonna give us a copy, I guess?
Yeah, I have, that's all. It was just a, it was just an access, you said, something that's specifically we talked about.
But the extension will be an actual access.
Yeah, it is right now from the three, the three loans ago.
Responsibility to, who does what? Who contributes what?
Yes, we need to develop this project.
To Chris's. To Chris's like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make the hem houses on there right now.
Right now, that along the driveway, there's Corey Westbrook's. Greg Westbrook's bringing Ash's to the north. Most of the three that access to each.
And then Corey's could be, could create from a purely factual standpoint, he could have more on Corey's.
No.
Why not?
Because we just did that subdivision down here and cut off Corey's access off on the way, doesn't really have any.
That's maxed out.
That's pretty much maxed out as far as being able to.
Well, if you do have five houses, just to, you're in for me, you probably know this, we're gonna have to change the name of the road. The county just changed, I mean.
Right, we would have to create the maintenance agreement and all that in place and it would have to be called like that.
Whatever. Yeah, whatever you.
That would call it when the fifth house was.
Right.
So, to clear to everyone that's here that has questions or has concerns about this subdivision, what will occur with the subdivision, nothing, nothing will physically occur. It'll just be the creation of lots and reporting to P to create the lots. There'll be no construction currently. There's potential construction and that gets us, and to do that is permitted under our current town code as long as provisions are accounted for to make sure we have proceedsments and access and all that. And in terms of moving forward, once the construction does occur, then we get into the health and safety issues and specifically the fire issue of having fire access and that. Someone would like to go over that and explain to the folks, to me, what that could mean on this particular property, if and when buildings are ever built on this stuff.
What do you want to move? Currently, right now, the way that there's, there is, there is a turnaround access on this, we would probably have to do a pull-off somewhere along the driveway. With the flat, this area right here, we're in a, a pull-off. And then there is ample room back here that can be stayed on for a turnaround, so. That would, that might have to be done once, once we start looking at this in any houses. There's ample room for turnoffs and things of that nature that would help us with fire code.
Can your driveway get, which would have to be twenty feet?
I believe the travel with this twenty feet.
It's, it's private.
I believe it is.
I don't know, I don't know if it continues down to the bar and it's twenty feet, but
Then that is.
From where it's next out along the drive up is twenty feet as measured in that.
Okay, and that would be determined by the CEO upon the building permit application now. Also, the development of each one of these lots, the, the planning board and the town will require a site plan for each lot.
Correct.
So at that time, each lot will be looked at in terms of stormwater, traffic. Making sure there's sewer water access, creating erosion control, all those things. So that would be a separate application before this war and have to be done for each one of those created lots that we're considering to see.
Correct, I believe I took the, that lots for the site plan has been.
Does it say that private right-of-way is here?
Yes.
Road is here?
Roads, the roads out of the right of.
Right. In that section.
Anthony, where's lot two?
Lot two would have been, we've subdivided this before, this was lot two, the last one, so I didn't want to create a whole one, two, three.
Okay, because you're asking for lot two on here, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, lot two is, was Ashley's lot, but we did this originally, it was Greg's lot was one, two, so Greg's lot, the one, the two, the four, just, I have like all kind, so various iterations of these subdivision that's been filed.
In that resolution, it's to, we change, we asked that you change it to the ones.
We can, if you want us to.
Yeah, yeah, I figured you're gonna create here.
Yeah, I can adjust this.
Okay, board, the. I see the ECB had no review of this, if I read their minutes correctly. Chris Jensen had brought up the section five eleven of the fire code, which I mentioned previously about once buildings are installed, the the accessway will have to be looked at in terms of its width and condition and turnarounds and pull-offs. Those things upon the construction of any, any buildings on the lot. The fire chief had given us a review on a previous with Corey subdivision and he was okay with access as far as he was concerned for both the Corey Westbrook and the Greg Westbrook subdivision. This is in the C P shed overlay, each lot is over one acre. So it's in compliance with that. It's all public water and sewer. Got no comments from Kevin Albany, the water shop manager, Jim Fletcher, our town, town highway superintendent, no comments. MRB had a letter at Lance that was basically, you were asking about existing easements.
Basically, everything that the board was requiring about tonight, which was proper access easements, making sure that all lots are serviceable for water and access to the public.
Are we, I don't think we're dealing with any NRI features here.
So, there's a couple, what I did was, we had Corey's last week.
Yep.
Or last time, I went through and added the NRI notes to the existing map showing there's some forest areas, there's some
I think we required.
Oilfield trouble lanes, I, I made a little bit of a list in the general notes saying what parcels are affected by what. In our eyes, there is this steep slopes in there. It's represented by this dotted line here that runs through and then.
The acronym, folks, is National Resource, our natural resource. And we, we have been looking very closely at steep slopes, wetlands, floodplains, forested areas on all our applications and just go through the checklist to make sure there is any that they've been accounted for and mitigated. Did you have the P and R fee on the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah.
And make sure, to make it self-aware. So we want to do a section one seventy-four fifteen review on this or somewhere we'll do it for us, up to the board. My, I think it's the same issues.
Yes.
I think as long as we ask for the same provisions.
All the.
Just to regenerate. Oh, no, no, I mean, no, in your, in your resolution or in your.
Yes, just, I kept all the same applicable conditions that were attached to the previous application the review last month or last meeting on this agenda, on this draft resolution for your consideration as well. I added a couple based on some of the information that's been presented to you tonight in terms of lot labeling and hence there was another additional one regarding the compliance with the fifth structure and what that means about fire code and so on. I had that statement as well. Your consideration.
Joe, I think, I think we should add the.
No, we talked about the.
Okay, I will go out to the folks in either here or TV land. Since you're here, you get to go first now. Your name and address, please.
I'm Kathleen Foster, forty sixty-five on Linda Drive. My property was. And, and then across.
You got a correspondence for you.
We did.
Thank you.
I'm here because I wanted to make sure that you in fact did give my response and Sean, I should. But I also wanted to make this very clear. This private entrance that enters here on Linda has five, or has three currently houses that are accessing this private drive that is currently not paved. It is a hill. It goes west and uphill from Anna Linda. And we are taking a lot, it has decent drainage, but because it is a hill and it is gravel, it is really doing a lot of destruction to Anna Linda, specifically where it joins. Now, I know this is the culvert and there was some discussion with me personally about trying to sell this from Gray, that would also be a potential issue because that would be another entity that would have to pay use of this private drive. If we're adding two more houses onto it, we would have five and or six. With an unpaid downhill drive that is just taking a lot of abuse to Anna Linda that was not designed. It's just a private road and there were a whole lot less houses on it when it was built. I have the unfortunate job of being the road committee chair.
Ah, we were looking for you.
We talk about you all the time.
I'm sure that people do.
I can go.
Um, yes, and due to attrition and death of my property, I'm actually, I am now the reigning person that collects for the plowing and maintenance. And it is an arduous task, damn near impossible. And so, in that capacity, I am here also because I am concerned for two things, besides that this is unpaid, like I said. He has almost fourteen more acres that he could develop. And I was here for the committee meeting when Ashley's house was being built, he was asked if he was gonna develop anything further, he said no. I personally wouldn't care if that was developed, if this was an actual commercial grade county or town maintain road, but it is not. And it is falling apart at this point. And I have been trying to get an HOA set up to know about. I've tried to get just a road committee maintenance agreement and having nineteen people agree is impossible. And so I'm really very, very concerned about this whole setup. And residents within this soon to be bigger potentially subdivision are not interested in participating in maintenance or having an HOA set up. So I'm very concerned about the expansion of what they're asking for now and additional further expansion when they were told before, they said they weren't gonna do any.
Are you saying that the the users of this private drive haven't contributed?
Um, in the past, there have been times when we have not, and then there's been resistance. Yes. Our street is actually blacklisted for many towns because many people didn't pay over the course of time to include some of them. So it is a problem.
Could you just clarify that, so they, they either do or they don't participate right now?
Um, I'm, I'm a pretty tough cookie and so they all do participate, it might be under duress.
So they are, they are.
I'm not interested in paying their share. But they, but when it comes to us getting any kind of maintenance done on the road, it's been, it's been an impossible stuff. So.
Do you have an aspiral, what does that work?
No, we don't.
How is it set up?
I take bids. We have it, we have in theory the committee who basically looking at it because no one else really does much. But we, I send out the bids to the people that are in writing, that are on the committee. We decide who we pick and then we divide it amongst the people that are, have, have houses or renters.
One share per lot, per house?
Yeah. There's a, there's a, there's a crux in this, but essentially, yes.
And then they pay you?
And yes, because no one will take individual checks from anyone anymore because they didn't.
Got it.
So now I'm the name, I write the check, but we have an honor road committee, Anna Linda Road repair bank account, so all the checks get made to that, it gets put into that and then I come in. I would love if you would maintain pursue the idea of an HOA or some kind of a legal document that everybody has to pay towards mutually agreeable majority wins, decision maintenance to include whoever is a participant off of this road here. And I would also ask that this road at least up to where it starts splitting off would be paved so that the, there would be enough distance, if it wasn't paved up here, that we wouldn't go downhill and, and just, I mean, it's just destroying.
The gravel is destroying Anna Linda.
It's not little gravel, I mean, they have big gravel, little gravel, boulders. You name it. And it just rolls downhill and there's a houses being built over here and these guys would be nice enough that they're letting a car go over here. So it's got these big rigs going back and forth and down and up and it's just, it's.
Well, Mrs. Foster, I'm so glad you came out to see him. It's information that we've been looking for, for a long time and really it's been lacking in terms of how, how, how that functions in terms of maintaining it on Linda, because on Linda, obviously the strange problems, the traffic problem, just going up there and.
It's a dead end, I'm a dead end.
Yeah, and here's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can't correct the sins of the past, but we certainly don't want to make it any worse than it is. I think as far as the paving of that new accessway, that's something we can certainly consider and possibly require as part of the land development or the site plan approval process and at least, you know, be able to take care of that. As far as getting the rest of Anna Linda widened, improved. Corey Westbrook, you know, came in with two lots on the.
Which was down center of our street, and this sign that was there has been up since like four or five or six months before it never got moved in.
What I was gonna say is with those two lots, Mr. Westbrook will have to go back to this board to get site plan approval. And then we, we put him on notice already at our place meeting that we will require improvements to be done along this furniture to ensure that the drainage is, makes things no worse. And that we at least maybe make it better. And that'll give us a chance to possibly correct some of the problems that are just out there.
You do know that there's a large spring on one of the lots.
Yep.
That doesn't affect us too. It really does, even by default, just.
Being that it's not a public street, I mean, there's, as a public agency, there's not a lot we can do and and it's sort of live up there and some people enjoy living on our private drive. More privacy and control who comes and goes and so on and so forth, but in this case, we have to look out for the health, excuse me, the safety, both the fire safety and traffic safety.
And the water.
And, and, well, and the drainage, and the drainage, I know all that water comes down on Linda across Wesley Road. If we could somehow rectify that to some degree.
Under Wesley Road too, in drilling.
Well, if that's get under, it'll.
Yeah, yeah. Direct shock.
So, again, it's, I appreciate you coming out to CDN, appreciate you taking the time to write the letter and certainly hear what you're saying and try to do, try to do something within our, our means as we can legally do to help you out.
Hang on just a minute, if you don't mind, I'm trying to.
I figured you have our attorney enough time to think. I just, I was working time.
Much appreciated, I'm still churning here, but, so when a new lot is added, does the does it go from nineteen to twenty? And you divide it by twenty, essentially? You're gonna get so, and it's generally one lot, one payment?
Well, I, so I actually have two lots, I'm on either side of Anna Linda.
One house.
I have nothing on the other lot, it's just, my, just please move.
Okay.
But if there's property that is, you know, if it has a culvert out of, you know, that, that's just, but if, if it was. If it was just an individual that owned that specific cove barn, that would be a new one. Would be required because they would have to be accessed.
Yeah.
But yes, um, in theory. Um, nobody would be charged, like if he sub divides it until that's brought by someone else, you wouldn't make them pay an extra fee.
So so it's kind of interesting because it's on the Linda Drive. But the driveway is driveway.
Oh, this is a this is probably longer than our.
I know, I know it's a road, but it's considered a driveway, it's not considered on the Linda.
Right.
Right, so it's a it's a driveway, a long one.
For me.
Yeah. I could see some setback.
Are they paying one share? They're paying three, okay. Right.
But I think part of the maintenance agreement. Anthony speak up if you think this won't work, but should be. You know, so all is this five or six lots eventually of this private drive?
Right now, when we are looking at it?
Yeah.
It would be five, potentially five on the right, which you three existing, which you and then you have one.
So those lots all have to enter into a maintenance agreement. Uh like I said, like HOA like and one of the things that we're gonna have to put in there is that. You know, in addition to contributing to the shared maintenance and use of their own private. They're gonna have to contribute fortunately. To be on the you know, the use maintenance of Anna Linda. Because Anna Linda doesn't have any right.
Right.
You know exactly how it goes on. Well, we'll work on that.
Yeah, that could be something that could.
If they come. No, it's gonna be hashed out. Before signatures on this.
On this.
Well, I think his maintenance agreement right for the road, when they submit it.
Yeah, so can we make that condition including contribution to the maintenance of Anna Linda? On Linda and.
Yeah, they would essentially need contributing to, right?
Yeah.
Whereas the people on Anna Linda would not have.
The one thing is those would be the only houses on Anna Linda that have any fire that that's been.
Well, thank goodness that there's gonna be some requirements finally. Yeah.
If it has to be worked out, I'll be.
But like Chuck said.
No one else is required.
Believe this is state law that requires a private road to maintain and repairs road so that it's functionally safe for vehicles. That are emergency vehicles and all that, and I'm trying to actually use that to actually set up. Um, it's not gonna be an HOA, but it is gonna be a road maintenance agreement because state law says that that has to be.
I agree fully with that, I I understand the issues on Anna Linda. Totally agree with.
Think you might be approaching that with the number of lots up there. I mean, it's kind of the point that if you have nineteen. Suppose nineteen lots?
Nineteen plus.
Plus five.
Nineteen.
Twenty-four lots.
Two plus two more.
With only one way in and one way out. Fire safety issue, I think that's Chris, it's up to our code enforcement.
Yeah, the threshold is very homeside, we're not sure where to start getting this for systems and second area.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking also in terms of a public if a public road versus a private road and. Condition, the width and all those issues that go along with the public road.
So Anthony, you do raise a good point that this would be the only written obligation on the whole road. Chuck made the the very good point earlier that we can't fix the past, but we can't fix going or going forward. But even more so, this is now, you know, when. Greg's began Greg and Ashley's and then it began Greg, Ashley and Corey's, these were one at a time. But now we're, I mean, this is five lots.
Right.
That's a substantial proportion of. The the overall number of on the Linda, I think it's appropriate that before we, you know, create more lots, we get that. And get at least some of on the Linda documented and then written. Uh. And either you or Greg or Greg's attorney can.
Yeah, we'll figure out how that works out.
It's not gonna be something overly burdensome, it's just gonna be something so we can finally fix what's going forward.
Anything else? Anybody else in the audience? How about the? Anyone out in the Zoom land? On this application? If not. Does the board have anything else to bring to? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Is the board ready that?
Yep.
Okay, we have a seeker resolution. Unlisted action and we also have a subdivision resolution. So let's. Move separately, I will take seeker, I'll make a motion that the. We we act upon the unlisted action of the short environmental assessment forms. Uh part one, uh it's completed by the applicant and we execute parts two and three. What they have in the town. And I will make that motion. I'll second. Okay, for discussion on the seeker, if not.
Any changes on that lot? Two and under. So the 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 opening paragraph of the resolution identifies them as lots one, two and three.
Yeah.
Um, and then later on, as it suggests the condition of approval, we have lot four being renamed to lot two. Which would then make it lots one, two and three.
Or this resolution you showed.
And I think before you do this resolution. Um, like we did last time, maybe go through the one seventy-four, like you suggested.
Oh, okay, we discussed it and maybe we didn't have to do it that then.
Fifteen minutes ago, but now we're.
Wow, yeah.
I was looking at the math when you.
Hold on, I know, I'm sorry, the brain was cooking.
Yeah. We do need the signatures.
I will do that, but uh you want to do the one seventy-four before we take the resolution for seeker or before we take the resolution for.
Resolution for approval subdivision.
Subdivision, okay, let's put the seeker to bed then.
Sorry.
You have a second.
Have a second, okay, I got, I made a motion second from Scott. Uh for discussion, none, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to the subdivision. It was. Pointed out by our attorney, well, we quickly. One seventy-four.
A, review of the proposal was completed and explains the applicable procedural requirements. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
B, the proposal clearly and accurately describes proposed lots as well as proposed proposed development of same. Everyone agree with that? C, resulting lots are sized and arranged to allow reasonable development and use in compliance with existing town code requirements and the intent of this chat. Everyone agree?
Yes.
D, subsequent use and development of the lots will not be unduly limited by easements, deed restrictions or other encumbrances. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
I take the consensus shown here on the findings. Easement's current exists on free ticket or utilities which we buy for future.
Perfect. Proposed lots and development provide for one, safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian access.
Yes.
Everyone agree? Two, sufficient space for onsite parking. Three, adequate emergency access.
Yeah.
Do we get something from the fire chief on this separate from the last one?
It was part of the.
Okay.
And his previous.
Proper drainage. Thank the applicants prepared sufficient.
Yes.
Drainage plans. Safe and sufficient water supply. They've got a water easement, proper sewage disposal.
Yeah.
Sewage easement, proper access to other available utilities such as gas, electric and telephone. It demonstrated that they have that. Resulting development will have an undue negative impact on the safety and efficiency of the existing road network.
Current.
So everyone agree with the statement that lands prepared? G, resulting development will have undue negative impact on neighboring's properties. The the planning board does not concur with that, it's the way the sentence is phrased.
Yes.
Um, because of adequate stormwater controls, development will hopefully improve the conditions to the neighbors. Uh and I think the same goes for the road network. H, proposed lot layouts and development are designed and arranged to minimize modification. Of existing landforms, including rock outcroppings, hilltop lookouts and natural contours. I think the NRI covers that.
Yep.
I, proposed lot layouts and development are designed and arranged to avoid impacts to natural features identified in the NRI. And that is an accurate statement.
Yes.
J, proposed lots and development avoid to the extent practical negatively impacting culturally and historically significant features. I believe the seeker demonstrates that there are none here. K, proposed lots and development avoid approaching on areas subject to periodic flooding. That's appropriate with the mitigation proposed. L, outdoor lighting. To be proposed, yes, sorry. Outdoor lighting shall be dark sky compliance, none is proposed at this point. Subdivision design allows the continuation of agricultural practices, not applicable. And and the subdivision design follows the towns about its site design and development guideline. As well as shoreline and ridgeline development guidelines where. Is there an agreement there?
It will. Okay, uh. Issues that division being addressed that you want to be subdivision. Someone wanna make a motion?
I will move to accept the subdivision. Application with the thirty.
Correct, I have thirteen.
Conditions.
So I revised your number nine, which was in regards to right of way deed agreement to the property owners. The new number nine is a shared use maintenance agreement, including contribution for maintenance and repair of vinyl on the drive. Uh for all lots off the private right of way must be submitted for review and approval by the town attorney. Must be recorded prior to signatures on the final plan. That is the new suggested number nine.
And shall include contribution, contribution to the maintenance.
This is, I read, a shared use maintenance agreement, including contribution for maintenance.
Sorry.
Repair vinyl on the drive for all lots off the private right of way must be submitted for review and approval by the town attorney and must be recorded. Prior to signatures on the final plan. Does that work?
Thank you.
Okay. The then the number twelve and number thirteen, number twelve, these are the two new ones. The existing private right of way serving the existing lot identified as Ashley, I'm not gonna try to pronounce the last name. And the new lot number two, which is really number four, I showed on the platform for you. Is to be extended over the existing driveway to provide legal access to these lots and shall be shown on the final plan prior to signatures. So currently, as you noted, driveway, the right of way don't.
Cor- cor- don't want, yeah.
So they would have to extend that right of way to include a driveway or a portion thereof.
I would say if I had extended or relocated, because they may want to cancel.
Right. They they just basically to provide legal access. And then number thirteen, all easements are to be submitted for review and approval by the town attorney. Are to be submitted for review and approval by the town attorney and must be recorded prior to signatures on the final plan.
Okay. This is Foster, this what we say help you a little bit in your.
It does, it does, but um it's when they're being unpaid, it's still.
Well, that's something I think we can address with the site plan approach.
Okay, because if if they develop that, it actually will increase the.
Oh, yeah.
Wear and tear, and they're not gonna pay like more portion. Even though they're doing more destruction to that area, so I just.
Well, as as we go through the site plans, you know, we'll work with you, you work with us. I think having someone like you involved in. Someone that's familiar with the operations going on out there would be helpful.
Mister Chairman, I think it's important to note that there is two conditions that require any proposed activity on the site development of any kind. Require cycling approval by the planning board and then also review and approval by the court enforcement officer regarding fire access. And performance with the fire code, so some of that as alluded by Mister Chairman here, uh will cover that road concerns.
And at this point, maybe Anthony, it's a nice idea to mention it to Greg or Corey since it sounds like there's some construction going on across the street. If they're gonna have to, they may just want to get those guys to do. Pay a little bit down.
Just mention it, they don't have to now, but.
I will say though, I was there during a rainstorm a couple days ago and there is a stream coming down that road. And then unfortunately, it does go across the road into that construction, but it also does go down your road. But also on your road, it does dam, there is a dam there that stops it, that blows it onto the other side. So I mean, there's that problem and then there's that problem.
The dam is.
Uh right past the driveway with the garage on it. There's like a, I was up there one day, there was frogs living in it, there was so much water holding up in there. I don't know who owned that garage right there, but right there, the dam's right up and water goes across the street. Yeah, so I mean, that needs to be cleared out.
Okay, we got a motion, uh Scott made the motion, Bob seconded, we have the conditions as read by the engineer, any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, our next hearing is for. Ludwig Kuenin for a property at the get to be assigned address on Cox Road, single state subdivision to subdivide. The current thirty eight plus acre property. Uh, two, three lots. Uh, various sizes, one being eight acres, one being ten acres, one being over twelve acres. And I will now open the hearing with a statement that. Uh Mister Kuenin went before the ZBA last week and was successful in getting the variances. So he's here tonight and familiar face of the podium.
It will also be a little bit easier to. So we have in front of us another three lots subdivision, this is not a catch, you know. All the lots are of of a larger size, um the variance that Chuck told you earlier was due to the length versus width, the two and a half. Long versus width, so that was approved um at the last seven board meeting, that was the only um subdivision that we ran into. As I said, there there's three lots. All of them are eight acres plus, so it's pretty straightforward. Any questions?
My current being armed.
Currently, yeah. I know there is um three prospective buyers for lots.
Is the owner of the land the?
The owner.
Well. So you lease you lease it to. Okay.
And he, is he gonna have an impact with this land being gone?
I just spoke with Ellen prior to coming to this meeting, they said they would not be, they also farm land to the east.
Yeah.
They have that through, they can access that either through my property or um depending on the weather, whatever they decide they do.
Yeah.
But there's no issue there.
Thank you.
Can we get a NRI feature on here, we got the this looks awful probably. The flood plain or what is associated on the.
A giant field. Right now.
I know the CBA was scratching her head. How come maybe a variance from the lot being narrower than the depth and, you know. I I have I have no idea why that was ever adopted other than looking at trying to prevent. A lot of flag lots. I I have I have no idea why that was ever adopted, other than looking at trying to prevent a lot of flag lots. That's all I could see.
It's it's those lots that it's, you know, the the reason for it. There's a lot of other parcels, you know, when it comes to like getting the lake in the lake, when you look at No Sex, like South Lake Brother. Eighty foot lots that are a thousand feet long.
Yeah, you can have a a narrow lot that's deep that you can just put.
Just, you know, developing at the road and this what is in fact, so that's kinda what they have thought.
But that's not an issue here tonight. See. Oh, there was a Sean.
Yes.
At the ZBA hearing, was the variance granted with a condition, something about a deed restriction? Was discussed. About the, is it not being for the dogs? Yeah, not being the dog or something to that effect. I know it came up, I'm not sure if it got into their actual orders. Cause I I think a result of ECB's comments regarding regarding the back of the property, cause that was concerning. About buffer. Well, if it's not in your. Do you remember that Michigan? Mr. Kuhn, do you remember?
The deed restriction is that there shall be no further subdivision of the parcels, that that's it.
Was it a condition or was it not?
That was a condition of approval, the variance is conditioned on a deed restriction of there being no further subdivision of the three parcels.
Which I think was retrieved by the applicant. It's part of the unit words. Okay, so it's not something we have to, should be also, not something we have to consider as part of our. Other than to recognize that the ZBA had. Put that as part of the.
And have the plans, I guess, shouldn't be signed until deed restriction is reported. That, and how would we know that it was?
Variance is invalid and it's all done. It's really a Chris Jensen enforcement issue.
Good.
It's really the copy of the.
So we weren't aware, we're talking about here again. Yeah, there was concern about further subdivision, but it was felt that these lots are conforming with what's across the street and in the area and what's proposed yours. It's not contrary or what's already existing in the in the the cock, so. That's the way it was left. Just wanna make sure we got it on the record. So again, ECB in their deliberations on the second of August, mentioned about a buffer to back the properties, but I think by restricting further subdivision, that would make sure that it doesn't become proliferation of subdivision lots. Jim Fletcher had no comments, the department had no comments, Chris Jensen had no comments. Look at the NRI, ah, the egg committee. Yeah. The egg committee in both its report and its minutes that stated that this is prime farm ground land. I don't know how it affects subdivision necessarily, other than again by deed restriction. Did you say it was being farmed, Mr. Miller? So I assume it would be continued to be farmed up until the lots are sold, when they're sold.
Correct, it's currently planted and the the strength of buyers indicated that they'd be willing to allow allow the quick grower to harvest harvest crop.
Buyers, all three or?
They're after three prospective buyers, yes.
And they all, they all said they'd be willing to.
Not planted because prospective buyers are very interested in if they if they if the subdivision is approved, they're very efficient, starting as early as possible. So they didn't wanna have to wait. Other than that, but the rest of the land still has been being actively farmed.
I think we rehearsed from the middle property.
Oh yeah, at the zoning board of the field.
She was buying the middle lot.
They started buyer of the middle lot, ten acres, all in that to be, she was hoping to build near the roads and hoped that that the farming would continue to affect, because the eastern edge was right in it. The real estate and key buyers and seller parts, I don't know the intention of the folks with the prospective buyers of the all bakers in the south. But they but they certainly agreed to let the current farmer to go ahead and harvest the well. This is the prime farm land, I was told, but I've forgotten the person's name on the zoning board of the field, and they said it's considered prime farm land by definition by the state of New York. It's not exactly the best farm land.
Well, the the egg committee really gets into the dirt early.
Yeah, there is there. There's dams that dictate the soil grades and it's above a certain grade, it's technically, it's legally defined by.
Fact that it's prime farm land in terms of the subdivision.
Doesn't mean you can't develop on it. Unless there's a condition.
And I think by having the oversized lots, it's going to it's not gonna guarantee a continuation of the farming, but it will certainly.
Get hurt.
People can put a big garden.
Yeah, that's why I asked if the farmer was gonna be hurt if he couldn't farm it anymore. He's not here, but you say he has alternative. Miller, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I spoke with Ellen Miller just prior to coming here, and they said both parties on this center and the southern lot are able to farm it back. If only the central party, then that would be not very practical.
Buyers is where they're here. Yeah. They have any intentions, but.
Well, that being said, let me, would you folks like to?
We're just looking to get out of suburbia and build our, our small, our new small family a home. We don't have any intentions of farming it. Like leasing it out.
Give me your name and address for the record.
Ethan Parish and currently on sixty two forty Gooddale Road. We don't have any intentions to lease it out to be farmed. See, now we're gonna be building, hopefully be building our house just about in the middle of the property. And we want our land to be able to use, but we that's about it.
So the deed restriction we mentioned tonight wouldn't be a burden to you?
No, I don't know. As long as there's no go further subdivision and not go further development, obviously, so we're gonna be building out. I don't know, building houses and civic development.
You have no, 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 you put a house.
Just cut off a lot of the road.
You know, accessory building, barns, you know, those kind of things.
Anything that goes with the acreage, you know, barns, it's on the keeping that parcel intact.
Yeah, but yeah, we're not, we're not subsiding any further.
Good. Okay.
You have a little cul-de-sac, you want you wanna get out of suburbia, just breathe your new suburbia right there.
Okay, anyone else in the audience regarding this application like to comment? Okay, it's getting back to this deed restriction real quick before we close. Should that be on the plan, on the subdivision plan, even though it's a?
I I very much prefer, that's a zoning board condition that they're legally allowed to impose. As a essentially an exchange for the variance, it's not something the planning board can do is regulate. Further subdivision, they're legally entitled to, if they meet the parameters under the zoning board. That being said, maybe a note quickly added to the plan that the zoning board granted the variance. So change your condition to say.
And the conditions.
Include the the variance and conditions.
Yeah.
There we go.
If it ever came back for subdivision later, the decade's playing board.
Yeah, I like having stuff.
How would I know? Okay. Okay, I was gonna close the hearing and we'll move on to deliberations. Again, we're looking at seeker unlisted action, I'll once again make a motions to state that this board determines that the action is classified a unlisted action and therefore in short, environmental assessment EAF has been prepared by the applicant, reviewed by the board and further knowledge through parts two and three by this board by our action this evening, so I make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, further discussions on seeker, all favor. Okay, move on to the subdivision.
I'll make the motion for the single stage subdivision approval for twenty two dash zero five two at unmarked Hickox Road with lands three.
Three divisions. Third one being that it will be added to the subdivision plans regarding the ZBA approval of the variances and how the conditions associated with that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion second, we got the part of recti there. This this would not come back for safe.
It will, yes.
Okay, we'll see you folks sometime in the future. Okay, we got a motion in a second, all favor.
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Careful how far you put your house back. For driveways.
Okay, you don't want it to wear too long.
Okay. One more subdivision. We're looking at a third subdivision tonight, CPN twenty two oh fifty three. That's the associates representing the propose, propose. Tripodies. Through the accent. And anyway, representing those folks at little fifty nine, Andrew thirty two. Another single state subdivision, creating two lots this time. And also amending our special use permit that was issued back in two thousand eighteen. It's your night in. I will figure.
Does anybody else feel like this is maybe a little too much?
Alright, so two lot subdivision, both ways, it's a large lot one, and then the resulting area the owner currently is gonna cut off lot one, the house, you have the house of our in the pasture for. There there's enough land there and there's no variances that need to be set back to fill from property lines for on the key animals. There is a special experiment on the current part that's there, the plans down the road is to build a home somewhere in the back, you know. But as this is the first step into that process, so it's a very special use permit to the new tax number that lot one is gonna be given, other than that, nothing is gonna change the parcel at this time. I guess that in the future, they'll see the subdivision, the site plan will change, the new home that we're building there, it's a single family home. But they just wanna cut that off now, so you can keep using the properties they are, the current homeowners still gonna do that. Nothing's gonna change there, and it'll just be another. It sounds like barn, I believe, to run the business out of.
Yeah.
It's a lot one, it's this, this is, right, tribut construction, it's a labor construction, it is right now, I believe.
Some kind of commercial stuff, right?
Yeah, like excavation, you know, things of that nature, so he's got the barn and some heavy equipment that's still.
On the house side of it?
That's it's only.
No, you can't skip, no, really.
In fact, driveway is kind of like, stores, you know, just a couple. It's pretty long. And there is a big, a big section of the. Thank you, appreciate it. So Chris Jensen had I read somewhere that he said no issues with the current S U P.
That practice, it's been operating smoothly since they opened.
Consideration of event would be justified. I guess my next question, the S U P is, will now just apply to lot one, since the the S U P, the amendment resolution.
So the amendment resolution, basically what I did is I made it condition number one. So typically when you grant a special use permit, you guys would say it shall remain in effect for the current and future owner of that premises of that lot. I've modified condition number one now of that, say, future owner, the current and future owner of lot one. With no requirement for, we know, provided the issue of the plans, I think the conditions of approval of town court tonight.
So even though the original S U P, power.
For one.
We are now cutting out lot two and the S U P no longer applies.
It only applies to lot one.
One, which is the business.
Right, but I do have a tax number for it, right?
Right, yeah, I'll be, we'll we'll be assigned until it's filed.
So the only way I think say is.
So that's how they.
Lot one, we can trace that.
Yeah.
So it'll probably be whatever the tax net is now in the point one.
Right.
When I do that, the guys will probably look at it like.
You're right.
On the annexation, on the annexations, I'll do it, and then I'll big change.
You're special, like, I can't say that.
Yeah, I have pad.
He never, he never put the subject system on lot one, did he?
There's nothing, it's just barn right now.
I think that's all it's gonna do.
Yeah, it's just, it's just with the.
Just like electric, I think that's it. And the subject system plot to show, so we're not, make sure it's on the right lot. Chris Jensen's only comment was we needed to modify the sub. ECB was discussed at their August second meeting, but no formal recommendation was made. The egg committee discussed it at August eleventh meeting and found that there was no loss. No loss of farm land as a result of this, I think most part, I guess they run motorcycles or tracks. Query, the county planning got into something about thirty percent structures, I have no idea.
They were looking at the coverage for lot one. And wanted us to acquire a new site plan with a special use.
Okay.
I don't think we need to.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board that?
They don't exceed their coverage now, or?
The recurring body should require a site plan that documents which thirty percent of the proposed seventy four acre contractor yard can be used for structures. As long as they meet the setbacks.
I think if he was to expand on the what's there now, maybe, but as far as he's concerned, it's not.
Just have to work within the restrictions of the NRI and side yard, front yard, rear yard, something. And number accessory building you're allowed on all.
Well, so the special use permit was tied to and conditioned. was tied to and conditioned upon a site plan when you granted it. Um, I don't think that changes anything, I mean, the, the building, the road are still in the same spot. Um, so long as the special permits, um, site plan doesn't encroach under what is now.
That site plan was canned on, in fact, we, we waived the professional.
Yeah, it probably looks exactly like that.
Uh, this is a much better.
But so long as the.
Force the money spent.
As long as it doesn't encroach into what is now lot two.
Yeah.
And I think that site plan that the special use permit is, uh, conditioned on is still valid, so it may start moving back here.
Right, it started expanding it over the years.
He's not compliant with the terms of this.
Okay, Sean said, don't worry about it, so.
Well, I said, don't worry, I didn't go up, don't worry.
Yeah, Chris said that.
You have to talk to make sure.
That happens on a Wednesday, that's.
Alright, uh, of course, anything else, uh, from the board? Any questions on this? Anybody in the audience? It's getting small. Oh, yes, sir. Good evening.
My name is Rick Constantino, my wife, Babe Constantino, is here. It's, um, several parts of the area. I have three basic questions. Number one, um, Martin McMillan cleared the property, um, Mr. Case. It was limited to five, seven, five separations. I don't know how it gets to five. We bought the first one, the top hill, J C joins the largest portion of property you're thinking of developing. Uh, number two, the house adjacent to mine. Number three, a new home for the young group. Parcel with Marty kept. Uh, I don't know how that's limiting in any way. You don't, certainly don't seem to want to limit this contribution from corporate uses. That's question number one. Um, and that goes back to Martin McMillan acquiring the property from Mr. Case. Number two is the definition of construction yard. I know we've kind of gone in increments here. Development of facilities for his company continues to grow. Um, there's a lot of traffic. This, this grows, that lesson, so there's lots of trucks coming in. I just worry about what's the definition of construction yard. Is it changing the dynamics to more equipment on site needs or? The third thing is, it's covered roads in his rights. Um, but, um, the front of this property owns property with and it's sometimes three and four things, sometimes boats, which seems that are not related to construction. Now, this would be, we have some pine trees. Where is, where is the property for sale? Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, well, I know when we issued the S U P, there was a lot of back and forths, I know neighbor across the street that had concerns about what was occurring and, uh, uh, I thought we had buttoned most of those things up with ours. I mean, there's like nineteen, twenty conditions in the S U P, right? I was looking for, I think, has been from, but especially use permit, uh, I thought we sort of covered all those of his. There was, uh, construction equipment pulling in and out onto the highway. I think you curtailed that, there was requirement with some trees. I remember some evergreens up along the parking lot, uh, there was designated where vehicles could park. The sale of equipment, I, I think that was precluded somehow.
I, I don't recall the details of the special use, other than one was granted with several conditions. They're not asking for an expansion or modification of this existing special use permit that was already proved. It's just simply a requirement of the subdivision that it be amended to now identify a lot one.
I mean, when this thing came up, first thing I thought of was Chris Jensen, who's obviously monitoring the special use permit.
So I think this is the final site plan.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Does he have these, I don't see how he could be, um, putting stuff out for sale if he had, if he had planted all these six to seven foot IKEA dungeons, thirteen trees, those spruce trees. Long County Road thirty-two, long summer boulders.
On the, on court, there shows the tree, there's a big gap.
Yeah.
They, they show the trees on Encore.
He did plant those.
Yeah, I would say twelve, fifteen. But it doesn't cover the, I don't know what that said.
Well, that's not the sign, I don't know what this is.
But this one is pretty much the same, and then so the county planning board did say one thing that we may want to just consider. Um, including, um, the initial, the two thousand eighteen special use permit waived the requirement for a ten-foot perimeter buffer. The planning board should reevaluate whether perimeter buffer areas are required to protect the residents once the lot, once the lot is subdivided and whether any modification of site lighting is required. Uh, should review and revise site operating, I don't know that you need a site operating, but I think you do, you shouldn't consider, um, the buffer between the house. Um, and I don't know what the waving of the ten-foot perimeter buffer was. Is the special permit resolution in there?
I think the original one said along the property line, the concern was, do they need to do it along the property line? So they just did it along the one frontage that was visible.
Which is what the neighbor had the issue with.
Well. So. But so with, you're okay if there's a dwelling unit on this, that requirement? That's a question.
Do we have that? Yeah, whatever. Century is.
That wasn't why, it's, you know, the, the.
Oh, that's your.
You waived the requirement for only one driveway servicing a site.
Cause he had the new driveway plus existing driveway.
Yeah, but now we don't need, you know, so maybe our condition where we're continuing the special permits, so should say. Said special use permit is modified.
There we actually made it before me, because it was a. Now there's one driveway of each. Chris Jensen reported the S U P has been in operation for the approved plan and statement of operation with no outstanding violations. So. Well, I read that, I figured, okay, we're, we're okay with what's happened in the past.
You didn't waive the ten-foot perimeter buffer though. And the lady said that, but.
It was discussed that it was a period based on the fact that the only part of the site can be visible.
Well, they didn't actually wait, so.
Well, what do we want to do?
But could you just give a little consideration, should there be a buffer between those? And the S U P.
She was just requiring.
It might not just a new permit, I don't know, maybe there shouldn't be, but just think about.
I thought of that, some, well, maybe now that, since there's a new lot there separating the residential from the commercial. And if the lot one was, or lot two was ever sold, uh, it might be someone living there that has no association with the business.
I think there is, absolutely, there is a resistance to true or, the background is on the south side of that.
Drive away, between the driveway.
I could add that to the plan maybe, but.
There is a, there is a small, there's like four trees there.
Yeah, larger pine trees, like, uh, some hardwood.
A buffer shall be added to the plan, if there's already a buffer, they're just draw it in. If there isn't, then you gotta put one in.
This is our subdivision. You buy the subdivision plan. We were reissuing special permit.
It looked like dead ash trees.
Yeah.
Very common, yes, sir. We'll, uh, calling you one more time, Rick. Would you stand up please a little bit? Thank you for knowing that, I can hear you better that way.
My, my question is, the fact that you're amending this to become a construction yard, change the nature? It's in the, it's written somewhere in construction. Um, and does that change the nature of this and how the property is being used? When it started, it was going to be either gonna put up, you know, a single facility need in their construction and equipment. And now it's a turnstile of a lot of equipment. And perhaps more equipment, um, that is part of the process is to then frequently sell it.
Yeah.
Just wondering, what was the intent of the special use permit?
Well.
House things, but to create, bringing more equipment there, uh, which sits, uh, is clearly visible. And as I said, what's being sold is not being buffered by pine trees, which are small and further down the road. And, and, and it doesn't interfere with.
So the equipment he's selling is between the pine trees and where?
With his own driveway. Yeah, the, the equipment is on a much higher elevation.
You can see it in the map, there's something there right now that works.
That way.
It's roughly there.
Yes.
He's holding things. To answer your question, how commercial he can be, uh, I mean. But whatever the special use permit allow him to do, and I, I, again, I don't have to affirm the, I know there are a whole lot of conditions. I don't, but limited the amount of equipment that could be there, where it had to be, I know it designated the storage area where it had to be stored behind the barn, uh.
So where's he selling stuff, over in front of his barn or in front of his house?
I believe he's gonna talk about this little.
Yeah, and there have been, um, it's had the equipment there for sale as well, but I'm not begrudging him there.
Yeah.
But it is part of, there are several phases to his operation. And my fear is just if he's, if he's turning this into a construction yard, is that you know that he's gonna have more equipment there that he's gonna wanna sell from that site when he no longer uses it.
So I think, I think the record showed that there's been no complaints or issues associated with the special use permit on the site. I would suggest that if there is an issue, someone, that, that be raised to the court enforcement officer so that he can go out and investigate that very much that, that issue concerned. Because then it becomes back to the board for that particular.
Well, and I'm sure Sean can, she'll see Chris tomorrow and say, hey, at the meeting last night, the
Hello, we always.
This is.
Hello.
There was a gentleman who was concerned about the have Chris go check it out.
But this subdivision doesn't do anything more to his yard, just somewhere.
Especially if you are different. Yeah.
For that, doesn't change, physically nothing changes.
Whether you think it's alliances, other than we're issuing amended.
Whatever he got proved.
S U P.
Right, but you're not expanding that S U P or a lot.
We're not, other than we're.
You're just correcting the.
Yes, allowing for the subdivision. Okay.
Okay, good answer to the question.
So I, Sean will mention that your concerns to Chris tomorrow. If you want to follow up with a call to Chris Jensen, our code enforcement officer, he's the one who releases the the, uh, compliance in terms of the, what's going on out there. Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else, audience?
I think everybody is, uh, we're, 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 it's something.
You should see. Didn't do either? Did I, did I close the hearing?
No.
Did I open the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I am going to close the hearing and move on. So we will, uh, look at another seeker unlisted action. And since I've done such a great job with the other two, I will take this one. I will make a motion that we consider a seeker resolution classified as an unlisted action for accepting the short form assessment prepared by the applicant part one. And that we execute parts two and three as, uh, it's part of our action. Now, and we, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion second to, uh, to accept the seeker, all in favor? Okay, and we'll move on to the subdivision. I just saw on your notes here. Town court enforcement comments, what were those comments? Did Chris have comments on them?
Yeah, well, they were in complaints, right?
His only comment was put into my letter, so there was no second comment.
So you probably just, I have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so then that doesn't mean. Make your motion. Well, you need a, a park directly for the, the lot one.
Yeah, okay, you built a new house.
So.
So we placed that.
Our standard, right, so I don't affect a lot more.
So it's, we use the process. Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion to accept that. Single-stage subdivision lot approval, uh, resolution, uh, five nine nine three County Road thirty-two in the AR two district, that's again uh, two-two dash zero five three. Uh, subdividing a lot into two lots and right now with two condition, is there a third to rename the special permit to lot one?
Uh. One more resolution after this.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Scott, in for the discussion, all in favor? Okay, uh, close. Alright, let's do the amendment to the special use.
So I'll make a motion for the special use permit approval on fifty-nine ninety-three, count of thirty-two, twenty-two dash zero five three with
I have two.
Two conditions.
The, so my suggestion is, is the whereas, the first whereas, where I was just gonna clean it up to reference that this is an amended special use permit to continue to operate the construction company and continue use of the construction storage yard with no development proposed. For new lot one, and then reference that associated with the single-stage subdivision plot approval for two lots of division, some of it. I wanted to reorganize that whereas, so that it read a little bit more cleanly about what it is that we're actually considering. And then I amended number one condition, just to say that amended special use permit uh, shall remain in effect for the current and future owner of lot one, seventy-four point one eight zero acres. With no requirement for renewal, provided the use remains in compliance with the conditions of approval and town court section two twenty fifteen, two twenty thirty-five, two twenty sixteen.
Man, that you accept this change.
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, I'll second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Here that. Alright. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Okay. Tonight is. Alrighty, let's move, let's move to page two.
Yep, absolutely, Chris Nadler, who's your lawyer? Sorry. Okay. I don't have.
I'll take picture here.
I'll take picture here. All right, we're moving on to a new site plan, a CPN twenty two fifty one, Marathon Engineering. Setting Theodore Shepherd and Lauren Burke, who is appropriate. Five oh oh seven, five oh oh nine, down here at sixteen, Chris's single state site plan approval. And a lot line adjustment approval for the construction of a new single family residence. The Burks, Shepard Burks were in front of the ZDA last weekend, was successful in getting their variances. So they're here before us for their site plan.
They submitted a letter they want to show. I, I put it on. There's actually two.
Okay, I will officially open the hearing and represent the advocate.
David, David Hamlin, Hamlin Architects.
I did.
We're here, we're here. It's also Ted Shepherd is in the audience. And me and Lauren Burke are constructing this residence for their full time personal use. They actually live in property directly to the north currently, uh, when this is constructed, they'll get to this new location. So it's a fairly simple application. We do get the variance for building coverage, one point nine percent. And then fine, and that's because it's not a shit, so we've got, otherwise we're fully compliant with building coverage. And then what, so Matt Tomlinson is also on Zoom tonight, uh, so in attendance on Zoom. And it's a lot of this is site plan related. I'll let Matt run through the site plan application first. And then I can answer any architectural design questions.
Great.
So Matt, I'll turn it over.
Great, thanks, David. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I can't be with you in person, uh, but appreciate the time to present the project. Uh, as David mentioned, we've got two lots being five thousand seven and five thousand nine. County Road sixteen, there are existing structures on both of those parcels that will be demolished. And then the lots combined into a single lot at just over a half an acre in size. We've, uh, worked diligently and were successful through the zoning board, as mentioned, in trying to uh, create a site plan and a house sighting, uh, design in such a way to really try to, uh, provide uh, compliance with both the intent and letter of the law with the site plan itself. And the rendering here before you, I colored in the driveway and the house and pool, just to give a picture and how that kind of fits with the neighborhood. We uh, located the house as a nice balance point between, uh, the setbacks from the lake as well as, uh, the roadway. Consistent with the existing setbacks as much as possible. And maintaining all of the vegetation on site from the mature tree standpoint, other than a single tree removal right near where the driveway enters, which is very close to the southernmost existing gravel driveway on the site. Uh, we shortened the driveway and limited, uh, the turnaround out in front of the garage as much as possible, again, in an effort to limit the lot coverage and to minimize as much as possible for obtaining the variances. As well as you'll see around the pool, this is a lap pool, uh, used for exercise, long distance swimming, not intended to be a large lounge area around it and really minimize the paving and walkways as much as possible here. Um, we are, is part of mitigation for the lot coverage variance, proposing a rain garden, which we will be collecting drainage uh, down the driveway as well as from the roof. And collecting that enclosed drainage system that runs along the face of the house. And then discharges to that rain garden for water, water quality treatment before it overflows to Canada Day with Lake. The, uh, grading and some of the comments that we've received, which I'll touch on in a minute. Uh, is being massaged to ensure that we are, uh, not impacting some of those trees. Um, so we're, we're working on addressing those comments received from MRB group. Uh, Colin sent that letter over. Uh, those are mostly technical in nature. I've gone through those and don't anticipate any issues whatsoever in complying with those comments. And then the septic system has been designed, we're working with the watershed inspector, as well as state health department is required to approve uh, this system as well, because there are a couple of waivers that we are requesting. Primarily focused on or required because of our proximity uh, towards the property lines in an effort to move the septic system as far away from the lake as possible. Other items on the site plan. Uh, primarily, again, because we are maintaining the majority of the existing mature trees in an effort to comply with the shoreline development guidelines and everything else are really focused on foundation plantings and plantings around, uh, the pool itself. And, uh, we think that that's really gonna be a beautiful view, both, uh, from the property to the lake and from the lake to the property. So with that, I'll turn it over to David to chat about the architecture.
Yeah, I think, um, we submitted a couple of exterior renderings. All those are showing the views and boys. As Matt pointed out, we were maintaining three large mature trees on the lakeside. And there's a, a decent distance of, of foundation planting and lawn area that also we maintain on the lakeside. Um, so that, you know, according to the intent and the existing trees that are being maintained and then the house, uh, behind it, it's, like I said, it's stage load point five of the night rule. Um, trying to break it up into some, uh, various refines. Use of stone and natural materials around the price of the house. So I think, you know, the way also the house is cited, you know, we bent the house back on the south edge. So you're not seeing full length of the house, um, of the lake. So we're using just, uh, standard traditional materials inside in stone. But it's themselves will be dark, uh, frame. And then just simple lawn area around the house.
Were you set on that color for the sign?
Yes, they do prefer white sign. But we're trying to blend that in with the, you know, use of natural stones as well.
It's wool, it's wool. Well, maybe we can soften it a little bit with more shrubbery or call that back, uh, for the, the stone.
Yeah, yeah, I think, right. And, and, you know, she does enjoy landscaping, so this will have more than showing here is just on the second.
We did such a great job screening the pool. I had to go look for cool on this.
Yeah.
So if, uh, you could sort of continue that, uh, motif across.
Yeah, I agree. This rendering was kind of done as a last item, just to show the mature trees that would be saved, I think. Yeah, enhanced foundation planning is something.
Steve, I think it's gotta also be reflected on the site plan.
Sure.
If they're gonna add more shrubbery and get to the site then. No, it's, yeah, beautiful design.
I do appreciate the, this picture, because I've asked for it under times. But I will say though, I was out to your site the other day, talking to your renters. We're in the house. They're kind of surprised to see me. Uh, but those, the, the trees aren't depict exactly what's there.
They're like the same species.
They're like twenty feet higher.
Yeah.
Just no leaves, so you're gonna see that more of the house. Those, those are great trees, but in reality, it's like twenty foot of trunk with no bark or no limbs on it. So that's where I would request, like Chuck was saying, more to soften that.
Right.
Those two trees there are.
Yeah, I was down there. I took a picture myself and there's, there's some. Or one. Toward the south. And then these couple of them are pretty high. Actually, they're on the website too. ECB.
Your.
ECB took some pictures of. I do it one, I'm just saying that it's like Chuck's saying, it needs a little bit more softener.
Yeah, I think we're up to it.
Um, I did have another question though. Did you have to get a permit maybe for somebody else, but their land, did you need to get a waiver with a hundred feet from the creek? To build variance?
There was no creek variance.
Are you thinking the?
There's a creek there. On the property next to it.
Yeah, the sands are sound.
Right.
Where your pictures went, ECB picture on the bottom.
I can try the fore and say.
Try the FTP.
Yeah, try the fore.
Hey, are you familiar with the creek in that area?
There's a drainage swale through there, but I, I wasn't, uh, aware of any permit needed, so I wasn't sure if that got flagged. It, it's not ringing a bell to me, nope, but we can take a look.
Let's look to the south.
Yeah.
There's, there's a head row, row of trees. It's on the other side of the south side of the trees.
There's, there's actually about a hundred foot woods between the south side of this property and the sand.
He's not that. Right, yeah, there is a big buffer there. Yeah.
So you're right, they're leaned up a little higher than our.
Yeah, that one pretty good, but then there was a couple to the right that were living up pretty high. But yeah, as long as you soften that even more, that's pretty good. Fifty, I need to go down more south.
Healthy with the trees.
Yeah, 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 for being.
I guess, uh, there were some ashes they took down.
There was five ashes along the north. All dead. And then that one large stump there.
Yeah.
Sadly, there was this huge hundred year old tree that involved a lot of.
I saw one that's on the coast, on the shoreline, actually it looked like two trunks coming out of it. That might be a bad tree. Like in the middle of the properties.
I think, and the one tree is being removed, if I recall, up by the driveway. All others will remain, uh.
And actually, a bridge is broken. Almost like. Lots to the south.
Yeah.
No, you need to go south more.
Yeah, could you zoom out a little?
Now more south. There's the creek.
It's awful.
There's a creek or a house.
Is that on your lot?
No. Okay.
Instead, what would be required for variance? The house, the property in yellow is where I live now.
Yep, right.
And then, um, most of the lots, another wood between south house and the center.
And if any, this is, this is to their garage.
Is there an elevation difference to the creek bed up? Is there an elevation difference from the creek bed up to, to the north as you go towards?
His very banks are pretty, no, pretty consistent.
Put the contours on.
How do I do?
Hit that, hit that arrow.
Oh, down in the bottom left corner.
Oh, yeah, layers, yeah.
I had to ask the question, because we just had.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was thinking, I, I thought you were saying there was a creek.
See the garage is here and the smoke.
All right. So gentle.
Well, it's not a steep slope, uh, okay. I'm just thinking of just a vertical difference.
We're not doing the initial approval.
No. Drain late. Okay. Read it. So the lot line adjustment is, that's the merge to do lots.
Yeah.
That's correct, yep.
So that has to occur uh, prior to the filing of the site plan or concurrent with.
Yes, and the reason of that for you is that it will create a lot that is less than we need for in the future.
Okay, but.
Overlay, you have the.
Right.
Because it's.
I guess our justification is you're taking two lots of the.
Absolutely, so you're making it.
Making it less, less.
Right.
Decreasing the degree of. One is a right direction.
A little over half an acre, right? Like point six. I'm sorry, it's a little over half an acre.
Yeah, just, just over half an acre, yep. That's correct.
Uh, shoreline guidelines, uh, it was amended once submitted, I, Matt, you submitted a second one, right? A little more detail on it?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
One of the comments requested, I think at PRC when we came in the first time.
Okay. So I think if we get some more landscaping, shrubbery, which would be reflected on the landscaping plan, I don't know.
You looking for the side setback there, Shawna?
At the garage.
Yep, uh, twelve feet. Um, for a frame of reference, the existing house, uh, along, around that lot, five thousand nine is about fourteen and a half feet. So we're, but it's parallel to the lot line, so the corner is just a couple of feet closer and, um, but generally the house is moved further away from the lot line.
Now I'm concerned that we missed that stream some of that.
It's.
What are we reviewing?
So.
That's why you get a board.
Can you have the engineer submit information as to confirm that it's not within a hundred feet of a stream?
It is.
We don't know that.
Oh, yes, it is.
Is that a, is that a class C stream?
That's your.
It's a blue line, it's a stream, a blue line. That's what the town dictates, right? So.
So blue lines are placed Cs?
That's.
I know we've got it always in the intermittent.
I think that's basically what we use as our defining mechanism for the stream versus what is a ditch. So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, what we're saying is Marathon to show that existing stream is located off your property, uh, on the neighboring parcel. And then putting a tie distance between top of bank to your closest, um, portion of your structure. So that we can accurately review it, get to confirm whether or not an area variance for that setback. If one is required or not.
And if it's under a hundred feet, you might as well submit an application for an error. So what can we do tonight?
To tell you, so. So. And if without an area variance, you can't prove that because it doesn't.
Sure, you're saying.
I think we're saying. Since there's a question whether a area variance is required regarding the distance from the stream to the new structure. Uh, that we we cannot act without that being confirmed and issued, that variance being issued. And we can't act if there's a non compliance in terms of the setting.
Any new structure needs to be at least a hundred feet from the stream. And it looks like it, you're around, I don't know, maybe sixty, I don't know, Matt, what do you think?
Or receive, or receive a very low.
So.
Or receive reverse.
I'm saying to comply.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't move the house forty feet.
So Shawna, could I ask a question? If we meet, if we match the existing, the setback of the existing house by shifting. The house by two feet, which would not impact a side setback, we fall under an existing nonconforming.
No, because.
That also was there.
No, you're tearing down the entire house, both structures. So that you can't use that side. Yeah, that goes back is on.
So if if. I guess not encouraging this, but it was just if the existing house was destroyed by an act of God, then then you would. Don't set your house on fire, sir.
With a renter.
Oh, my god.
But but so then you would be eligible because mayor state law requires that. Um, but state law and town code say that. Uh, non conformities need to be extinguished. Uh, preexisting non conformities are extinguished on demolition. Interesting about the character of the stream itself. And, you know, how how do we know that it's a. Uh, stream that requires them. So I know, and maybe Shawna can enlighten me as well, but in the past, it was determined that if the stream was carrying water six months out of the year. Um, that that was determined by the town to be a stream that needed to be perfect protected now. Uh, fast forward to today, I don't know if that terminology stills what used, but I know that we determined it based on. Whether or not it's a blue line extreme, which is a topography map that typically provided or it's a D C map that's been provided to demonstrate.
If it's a blue line on on board.
Typically, typically that matches what we would see on the topo or some other mapping that would determine whether or not it's a protected stream of some sort.
Do our N R I maps show?
Streams.
Water courses.
They show all water courses, but I don't know if it defines what is a.
I don't, it doesn't define blue line versus.
That's that was the terminology that was used previously, six months out of the year, I believe now it's a blue line.
Let's see, because I think I think Chris was just going crazy trying to figure out. Didn't run six six months out.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we moved away from that.
Yep, that's right.
Because Chris was going crazy.
Yeah.
So the classification is that something, how do you, you know, before we go through this. More steps. For a stream that maybe is not really a stream, but it's not. If it's. Uh, Marathon will be able to provide a map or review a map to determines whether or not. That that they feel that that stream is considered a blue line stream. If it is, they're going to provide that map to the town. With a tie distance between the stream and the house to close point, and if it's less than a hundred feet, then we're going to need an area variance application. If if Matt through his review determines that. That that it's in question that whether or not that's a blue line stream or not, my suggestion would that Matt would contact Shawna at the town and have that dialogue with Shawna. And the code force officer to get the town's blessing on his determination.
If we do have to give it from the.
You'd have to go to the joint one of those.
Procedurally, your next step would be once, if a variance is required, you go get a variance and then come back to the planning board for an approval of this application.
And there there's no opportunity for conditional approval? I just, if if for some reason this is not, obviously, we would need to obtain a variance if it's required. And if this is conditioned on obtaining that variance, uh, you know, if if we're not successful with that and it is in fact required, we of course would have to come back before. This board based on that determination. But if for whatever reason, this is not a stream that would qualify for that we run the risk of. Potentially losing a month, obviously, for uh, for that delay, which we'd like to avoid if at all possible.
It'd actually be more like two months.
Well, I'm at the mercy of staff. Oh, Kenny can't do.
Well, you can't approve. A project that is not.
Site plan that.
That is not be influenced, that is not performing zoning.
Understood, yep.
This step one. The determination. For that proposed purposes of performing zoning, for the zoning. Rest squarely with zoning with the planning. Zoning law determination. Essentially is background on what applications are need.
Okay. So we can't vote tonight without the CBA, or at least some sort of. Referee's decision as to whether. It requires a.
Well.
Okay.
So. We see a site plan of this.
It's here, we just need to. We want to see the the whole site.
Yeah, so they got all the, they got four variances last year? Are they gonna start those variances in your?
Yeah, they've received. Rear setback, black brick and driveway area variance for driveway setback.
For expansion. Of the preexisting nonconformant. So. So we've got fifty two. Feet, this point here is fifty two, this is twelve. This was the. Variance for that. Get it to your feet, you have to knock the garage essentially.
That's just doing it on on quarter, we need that to.
I'm mostly capable of doing myself, I think you're gonna want your team to to take a look at it.
I mean, yes.
Is it?
I only call it string, correct, or whatever you want to call it. It's drying most of the year, the only time you can get any water out of there is if you get a. Bad. Rainstorm. It's not.
I think, you know. From my standpoint, and it's not my call, to be honest, it's really comes down to an interpretation. But that might that might play in, I don't know if there's documentation that can be provided that justifies your concern of whether or not it's.
Hey, Chuck.
A blue.
Here's your rival.
Stream or not, but that foundation can.
Hang on about it to the town. Lance, where are we? See if we got a class C there and. You know, look up the two actuals on the code cells.
I'm gonna give you a code.
That's two twenty.
Hello.
Yeah, but my orientation.
Well, so except as otherwise stated, no structure shall be built within one hundred feet of the bed of a stream. Carrying water on an average of six months of the year. Or within twenty five feet of mean height. Elevation. Which is such a surprise here. Of a previous private bridges.
That does not carry water six months of the year.
Is there a. A way to take a look at that Shawna? I note that the house to the south is obviously quite a bit closer to the bed of that stream, so that may. Indicate that that was determined to not be. A stream, or they obtained a variance, obviously.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if they obtained a variance, we would have to look into that.
But that that house to the south is quite a bit closer than we would be to that stream bed.
Sands is not very.
Well, they they.
I think it's. Great to drag things out.
I cannot, if I grab the mouse again. Yep.
Think they're about twenty to twenty five feet away from it.
So.
I just see the sands.
Well, while we're, while Shawna is looking at that, does anybody know this stream? Is anybody in the room familiar with this stream? Oh, yeah. Come get them here.
But I mean.
Your bias.
I don't really. So do you? See what your house is. Yeah. To me, it's not a stream, it's just like a. It's a ship in the woods. Uh, if you, you know, if you had a gully wash, you'd need water.
And it's not like.
A lot of child on your.
It's not like Tishner belt, it's not like a.
Yes.
Orange.
If you need to come hide the the ceiling window right here. I just need to get some less, you get this. My documents.
You need to go over.
Just want to grab a mic.
Then hide the ceiling window, let people see it. If you, if you look at the the house that I'm now. It's just a sea. Cold, I don't know, it's in between the two houses.
If they do have.
Ten feet away.
Oh, wait, we've got a couple issues. Zoning issue is you can't be one hundred feet. Within one hundred feet from a stream that carries water six more than six months a year. Uh, I don't know what the requirement for a class C stream is, Lance.
What's class C mean?
Can you give us a little background on what a stream is and.
Well, I'm.
Like what regulations did.
What does the town regulate? Class C?
Class C, no.
Classic.
I think that was changed, this is today's code.
Today's good.
I thought it was changed too, but.
Six months of the year.
Except as otherwise stated in this chapter. No structure shall be built within one hundred feet of the bed of a stream. Carrying water on an average of six months of the year or within twenty five feet of the mean height water in a foundation.
Now typically, these classy streams are doesn't need this water, it doesn't need water, it carries water six months out of the year.
That doesn't carry water six months out of the year and it's. It can go out. There's a color that comes down.
Yeah. Hey Shawna, it's not that person. I need your expertise. Is there somewhere in the code that regulates class C streams here?
Not to my knowledge.
It's the six months a year.
The six month definition that we use.
It is. Sure then, we're pretty sure.
Yeah, and so you just write it out, wow.
Well, I'm wondering if there's some other place in the code.
No, that's the, that's the one I was heard to.
Okay. So then, class C or not, the issue before the board is does that stream carry water more than six months of the year?
Yep.
Now you've got a resident who lives two doors away from that stream right now. You don't have to do this, but you could swear him in, have him testify. As to, you know, how many months in his estimation that stream carries water and then. Have a condition that that be confirmed by the engineers and.
I'm fine with it.
Does that make sense to everybody? Sensitive hesitation still.
Yeah.
Well.
Coming up.
Well, that's why, that's why I'd say there's, you put a condition that it be confirmed.
Right.
But once you have some testimony bias notwithstanding, you'd be committing perjury if the.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if that thing was filled with water right now. And you'll you'll have a double check. And I don't want to stop the house, I just want to make sure that we are.
Yeah, but but I think this sworn testimony gives you a basis to believe that it's not, but that it is in compliance with the zoning code. And then if you have a condition that that be double checked, you can move forward to.
Definitely accept presidents by doing that, taking. Absolutely not.
No.
Absolutely not, um. This is something that wasn't raised in the multiple levels of review. At the town from from towns, multiple town staff members, which, you know, if this was, you know. A big creek that everybody could see. Um, if when all of you drove past this project to to, you know, take a look at the property before. Voting on it tonight, you notice the giant raging whitewater rapids, well then. You know, then we would have to say, well, maybe we shouldn't do this, but. If it got missed, it may very well just be a bitch. I don't know that, but.
If sands. If sands is twenty feet water than that.
That's.
Right.
Yeah, that.
That could be a return to existing, and they haven't.
Was determined that that tide of truth.
I just sort of figure out there.
Five, that would be.
They should be more fifty.
They are.
Fifty, no, fifty eleven?
Yeah, like fifty eleven.
Fifty eleven or?
Fifty thirteen.
Thirteen. Fifty.
The property to the south address is is fifty nineteen, if that's what you're looking for.
Yep, fifty nineteen.
Over it, so. They just recently put a.
Pretty big.
This is showing.
Yeah, well. Well. Yeah. I would have to, anytime we pull it. If it's not here, I have to change, I know.
I know, I know.
I swear I'm gonna change your class.
And I'm looking for a code, I can't, I'm sorry. I'm looking for it. It feels not popular. All right, so.
Class C.
Class C streams under the D C position. Well, did you?
Yeah, this shows, this shows the two streams that show up on. Topography maps that are identified as class streams in the vicinity of his location. I can't confirm. It just scales, these two are the same, one that you're looking at on there.
All right.
Without doing more research.
So first of all, was your your suggested option for moving forward here? That the.
The applicant.
Applicant swear at us?
Yeah.
He's probably ready to swear at us.
And then that you have a condition. Um, that that be verified and that.
Okay. So you want to walk us through that, you want the. Mr. Shepherd.
Yeah, sir, can you stand up?
What am I testifying to?
I know, I'm gonna ask you some questions.
Yes, guys.
Uh, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth to this board under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, you say your name for the rest.
You're sure.
What's your current address?
Five zero zero five West Lake Road. County sixteen.
Okay, and. You've been directing your attention to this, the blue line on the on core mass up on the big screens, be up on the big screen in a moment. How long have you lived at your current address?
How long have you lived at your current address? Are you familiar with your neighborhood? Are you familiar with the Sands property? How many times have you walked by the Sands property in the last four years? Oh.
On the road?
Yeah. Okay, how many times have you driven past it? Now, on the big screen in the boardroom, there is a an encore image. Can you scroll up a little bit more, please, and see what's on top of the house? No, other way, other way. Directing your attention to the blue line on the parcel that's labeled five zero one nine, known as the Sands residence. Are you familiar with that blue line? Have you ever seen anything in that location?
I know there's a stream or quicker, a little bit more.
Okay, in your estimation, does it carry water for more than six months a year?
I do not think it does. Can't be positive yes or no, but I don't think it does. My real fear is to be dragged. The reason you say that is because the one on the other side of my property. Between my house and the house.
Have you ever seen this stream with water in it?
Yes.
How many times, how many months a year do you think it has water? If you can't say that's okay. Uh, I think we gotta put this into the next. Get the, get the backs before you vote then.
Okay.
But I think well, if it is not a regulated stream under two twenty dash nine, then you can get your site plan approval without, you're not adding any variance. Yeah.
We could actually come, we could come back on the thirteen, right? We continue.
Of the October or September?
September, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, because that's where. If there was no variance needed, we could put you on the September thirteenth.
Let's continue it to them.
Pending.
Pending determinations.
So what will be the determining factor?
Sean and Chris are gonna tell you if there's a one hundred foot upper requirement.
Okay.
And if there isn't, that applies here.
So based on their evaluation, they will determine whether.
Yeah, and if there is, then the.
Then you're.
Yes, so kind of a question. The corner of Nancy Sands' house. Obviously is a lot of nature than where I am, so if that did not need a.
Yeah, so you're, they're gonna look into that.
Could that be a factor, say, you know, who knows whether it's six months, yes or no? The fact that they didn't need the variance, would that influence what we need the variance?
No, no.
Based on timing, this is several years ago, a ton, but
Well, you can pull it out.
Streams can change, things can be.
See what the determine what nation was at that time.
I think it would have a bearing on it, but it's not hundred. That makes sense.
That may say it was determined
Yeah.
Did not carry water for six months of the year and therefore so that way it helps you make that decision. Okay? All right, so I need a motion to continue to, uh, the thirteenth of September at the earliest.
So we'll
subject to what the orders found out, discovered. Okay? Uh, is there anything else? Before we vote? We went from the applicant, so that we don't get into a back and forth here. And we talked about the landscaping, Dave, that's something you could reflect.
We can bring it.
Uh, I don't think there is. I know the ECB spent a lot of time talking about protecting the trees, which we talked about tonight. They suggested the forest pavement, which I know came up to the ZBA, uh, but it was sort of thought that the uh, given the, the ground conditions and all that would not be the best decision. And it was also talk about a collection area in the center of the driveway, which I think Matt, you had said that could be an issue in terms of trying to move cars around in that, that circle.
Yeah, that's correct. Instead of locating it in the middle of the drive, because we tried to minimize that pavement for turning movements for the two-car garage, we created a garden with a, with a storm drain in it just off the side of, uh, the driveway for a landscaped area, so in, in intent, uh, kind of creating the same method of treatment or collection, if you will, but not putting an obstacle in the middle of the driveway.
Okay. The ECB also, and, and the good suggestion was making sure all the vegetation was native. Patient. Uh, whatever new vegetation is installed. Uh, so apparently they, they, they were looking at your schedule, landscape be scheduled, there might have been some invasive, not invasive, but non-native plants there, so check that. We'll, we'll double back on that on the thirteenth. Uh, Fletcher had no comments. Uh, is it existing septic system that's in the front? Are you gonna, you're gonna fill that, right?
Yes, well, this is a new septic system application.
New septic, yes, correct. We, we will be abandoning, uh, the existing one or removing it and putting in a whole new one.
And where are you on the, in the queue with the DOH, the septic system?
Some, somewhere in the stack.
All right, well, any, any approval by this board would be conditional upon your getting that approval.
Understood.
Okay, uh, existing trees remain, phosphorus note, I think was on the, you had that in your, your review, right?
Yeah, and it is a suggestion.
And you're gonna need a permit from the county public works for the driveway. Okay, so I don't think there's any other issues that are major. So if we can, uh, get this issue of the stream and Bob, good for pointing that out, picking that up. And, uh, so we got a motion of second to continue this thirteenth, all in favor? I, I post. Okay, see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Matt.
Take care.
Luke to Jared, right? This poor guy, he was here since last night. He thought the meeting was on Tuesday, so he stayed overnight. What a, what a trooper. All right, I will say, since the hour is getting late and and this is the sketch plan review, I guess I should announce what we're looking at, and why don't we take both sketch plans together, is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Uh, and since we don't have a sketch plan to look at.
Right.
Uh, we are sort of at a loss for what we can do this evening, though, we're willing to, uh, to meet you, talk with you briefly, and I know you have a short presentation to make regarding, I guess, the generics of.
Yeah.
So, introduce yourself and have a.
Great, uh, well, I'm Chad Goldman, Director of the Distributed Suns is based in Washington DC, founded in two thousand nine, active in New York since twenty twelve. In twenty fifteen, me and my colleague, I got the first megawatt scale solar rate permitted here in Ontario County, just over and actually just recently, uh, finished construction on a hundred acres in the town of Morris, where I'm an engineering, also a town engineer there, so. Spent a lot of time upstate in New York, working with many towns like yourselves on solar plants. So, as you point out, we're, we're talking very conceptually here this evening, uh, I had submitted some sketch sketches into the planner and, um, we've already been to the agricultural advisory committee who has you know, made their clear statement that these projects would represent a loss of valuable agricultural land. No chance, uh, that's the first condition required for any special use permit for a solar project in this town. So yes, what I'm here to try and talk about is, is, uh, explain a little bit about our approach to solar and how that might be different from what was considered by the ag advisory committee. And I will show a quick little video to help give, give context, so maybe I will start and begin with this nice little, a couple minutes, uh.
Just very clear?
Yes, please say it like, so I'll.
I noticed, what, March ninth, two thousand seventeen?
Yeah, so, so we've been thinking about this for a long, long time. This, 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 we made this act in two thousand seventeen and for many towns, you know, many had considered what happens at the end of all this life, and, and that's part of what we're going to get to. We did, we, we did try to save some time so that you could see this all. And speed, so when this is, this is, these are all ground screws and there could also be, uh, driven piles to make the foundations that we essentially be making up those parts that hold up the table of the solar. So what we're just trying to show you is that it takes a small piece of equipment and a couple minutes to put these things in and out. So by design, our solar is modular, easy to install, e- easy to uninstall, very low impact on anything we're doing in underneath the ground and yeah, the whole point of this is to show these things can be easily decommissioned when, when they're ready to go in the future. Uh, modules have an aluminum frame, the silicon is, is a very low, uh, amount of weight, but the real thing that will make the decommissioning sort of worthwhile for everyone in it is, is this part is steel. There's, there's a good amount of steel to be recycled and, and put forth. Here, so we do probably stop the right, I, I think everybody did.
No, keep it running.
Okay.
All right, we don't, we don't.
So talk about something else, sir. Why, why, why is your permission to not renew?
So we are definitely open to renew, right? I mean, if we, we have the long-term opinion that uh, electricity rates are not going to go down. So in the case that electricity rates continue to go up and we can work inside of a special use permit, inside of an agreement with the landowner and still stay connected to the utility and of course still make money, we, we'd be open to, to extend, but A, it's the law that we have to have a decommission plan and B, it's, it's just, it's, it's actually capable and reasonable for us to execute on. So, uh, we, we have, uh, we, we do leases for our projects rather than buy the land outright, and so leases are mandates, and if we, we have to, we have an obligation to decommission uh, if, if we can reach terms to, to extend, so. So, this is what we ran back in two thousand seventeen, yeah. You saw there was four guys and they're using this off-the-shelf tools, it's, it's a screw gun to undo most of those bolts and I would see a total handle that can't move these things coming off.
So all your rest with their holes.
All your rest with their holes in the ground. Um, the only built infrastructure that, that I would call attention to is, you know, is tents. Yeah, it's large steel, recycled, there would be a gravel access to get to two concrete equipment pads where we centralize, uh, all the cables that are collecting electricity into those two central locations and then we'll have medium voltage runs, so the more heavy gauge wires to go from those pads into your G and E electricity. So again, the, the point I want to make, questioning that is that by design, it is low impact, it's, there's, there's approximately eight hundred square feet of concrete. So the, the, the elements I want to call attention to is loss of valuable farmland, right? And, and I think moving forward, I, I'd love to get a chance to talk to the ag advisory committee, because they've already outlined and we're here for that, so I'd love to get a chance to do that, because in terms of loss, right? This land is still going to be available in the future, the farming, it's not going to have sewer or water, other, you know, septic foundations, anything else like that, it's a very light touch and it's a decommission. And, you know, in terms of loss, we are still able to host sheep in there and then, you know, we're also we have executing stats and we're trying to find, uh, beekeepers in the future for our, our pollinator from the mid, so those are agricultural activities, so it's not a true loss of it. It is a change from the current situation where these, these properties, one is in soy, one's in corn, they're being farmed for, for scale operations. But we'll still be able to continue agricultural activity there and then, you know, it's just a matter of valuable, these are listed as, some, some of them have prime farmlands, some of the, this prime farm land is drained. These fields are not drained, so, uh, those portions, I would say are prime, but the, the point being is that, you know, it's, 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 it's a value proposition on farmland and we can still provide value on farmland, to the landowner, to the town, to the local infrastructure, all without adding just a little water, adding it to some schools, so.
How, how long's your typical lease?
Uh, so we sign for twenty-five years with two five-year extensions that are that are, so it's essentially thirty-five years.
Thirty-five. Panel's life is thirty-five?
Uh, they are warranted for twenty-five years, so we're expecting, you know, four years out of the original you know, remote monitoring stations where they just have the small panel, they've, they've been up there for years, so.
Are you discussing movable panels?
Yeah, so we.
To be active or passively moved?
It is a, um, tracking system
Yeah.
in which there's a slew drive to turn it east in the morning.
Well, actually.
Yes, it's, it's an active.
How high can you go with your panels?
We can go size one, but we're, uh, we're, we're limited, we know it's all the time. It's ten or twelve, but that, that's a very manageable, um, I, for us, I have permitted in the past something called a, a two P tracker, which could go up to fourteen feet, but trying, yeah, I can try that here, getting feedback, but the snow roads.
Can you discuss a little bit more of what you said that's a benefit to X, Y, and Z, the town and the people? Uh, for example, let me just be blunt, uh, it's good for the landowner, definitely. It's a great thing, because he doesn't have to farm anymore or lease it out. How is it good for the town? How is it good for the town people to see this?
So, so good for the town, right? So we've got, um, we bring, uh, you know, well, it's vegetated screening, which is part of town code to block this all off, so it won't actually be in everyone's face, but um, we are not requiring any new sewer or water, right? No, goodness, we'll just, so, so no, no added costs or worry. Shuffle them up. We're investing, with these projects, it would be over two million dollars to RG. That sort of defers things that would otherwise be put to the ratepayers. We will be paying, uh, the payment, we'll seek in a payment and move tax group with the Ontario County IDA. That means that, that payment would be above and beyond what's already being received in town coffers for, for that property. Um, unfortunately, we do that, you know, these properties are under, uh, because they're in agricultural districts, they are they have a tax exemption, we are obligated to make up that difference and pay the full record on the land. Else, and then, and revenues, we, our projects are the base study cases for the American Solar Grazing Association. We're working, Cornell University has done a lot of that research on our facilities, so that's a, that's a revenue able to go to, to local shepherds. I think I covered it.
Are you offering credits to local communities?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, so, yeah, so we're, uh, for, for early covers, for early signers, you know, we can get down to fifteen percent off of RG's rates, and that's not like the ESCOs, the ESCOs just offer. Uh savings just on the energy supply and not delivery, whereas we're we're discounted to both, so it's a real ten percent or maybe fifteen percent discount.
That would be you, you would say through your leasing time? Twenty five plus ten or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're we're we'd we'd have the exclusive period to county candidate residents to say. This is coming up in your neighborhood, you guys get the benefit and okay, and that benefit, and then as, yeah, it's it's. The rate is is a guaranteed savings rate, it's me. We have our net metering rate for twenty five years, so I think. We might, we might limit it by twenty five.
Are you uh gonna bring in any batteries?
No, no, that that's a, it's a separate nicer program and and frankly. We're doing some called distributed generation, so it's it's offset here and there's really not a mechanism. Or or compensation for the projects that we're on.
These two lots are close to a substation.
Um.
If you're not talking batteries.
There, there are a couple of miles, I mean, so.
So you'd have to convey it from the site.
So the 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 reason why we chose to say this, there's adjacent briefays. Electrist, right, they're both on four thousand five hundred volt circuits.
Mm hmm.
And those are, have been reviewed by our G E and.
She don't need a substation, you just.
No, we we, yeah, we we connect into the existing grid and we're obligated to pay all the upgrades that are required to make sure that. Continue safe operation and. Yeah.
One of these properties borders Farmington, so I want to know what Farmington had to say to. I know.
Yes, yeah, the the northwest part, it's it's actually the most northwest property in town and, yeah, it's it's actually borders. Eastern, Victor and Farmington.
Yeah.
All three of those in there.
It borders another farm field.
One, right, Manor, right over the border, it's 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 visible. From.
Is the, are both of the entire, I mean, is the entire parcel in the same thing?
Yeah, 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 all the parcels are.
Farm, if the project were to move forward, Farmington would be according to your view.
Yeah, I mean, I should do a.
So one part of your decommissioning plan is to make sure the gag land goes back if people was approved to go back to ag land. We had a thought, uh would you be up for doing soil testing prior to and then at the end of decommissioning? To ensure that our soil goes back, this will.
Yes, yes, so so in fact, we we're, we we were thinking about decommissioning long before and then, yeah, uh circa two thousand nineteen. The Department of Agriculture markets imposed and and required their own. Uh additional uh decommission requirements such as having an environmental monitor out during the construction period. And then having that same environmental monitor that that decommission period in that future, so we. As participants in nicer programs, we notified in parallel. I started and the Department of Ag and Markets to say. This property was listed as an agricultural district and we're developing it in solar, please be aware of this and. There's the tax implications and the state is being notified of that and they obligated us and and we are willing, very willing to. Testing soil beforehand and being obligated to return it back to preexisting condition, and that's also again. Part of our lease, right, that we we have that obligation back to the.
Now you have an obligation, there's no proof. That's what we say added, that's what we say.
Yeah, well, but then.
That's what Farmington did on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd be an amount in the bond for soil restoration.
Yeah, yeah.
Required, yeah. That'd be good. How far along is your Mount Morris?
Uh we're waiting on Nacerda to come in for their final inspection, uh everything has been approved by RG.
See, you have local approvals?
Yeah, look, approval, approval was granted September twenty twenty uh for special use permit and cycle plant. Uh building permits for sort of June, July twenty twenty one and. Uh commercial operation of RG was sort of uh people may. It starts built, it's built, yeah, yeah. So we.
These lots subject to any uh egg overlay or any egg restriction others than this, with the egg. Anything else is it all in the of our? Maps?
Restrictions. Protection plan?
Thanks.
Ang protection.
All of us.
Pedal for Brooklyn Way.
Is it in the town?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I I don't know what, what restrictions.
Ontario County Ag District.
Yeah, to both.
Pedal for strategic farmland protection area, no. Yes, it is in the strategic farmland protection area, it is not in the strategic forest protection area. No reason.
Right, yeah.
So. Look away. The way that just wondered, hey, you know, those conditions.
Yeah.
You have restrictions. So. Your code requires that you, before you approve especially use permit for a large scale solar system. You make a specific finding that the use of the land required by the proposed project. Shall not cause the loss of valuable agricultural land to the town. That's a very fact specific determination that is on. It's not the determination of the agricultural uh committee, advisory committee. But there, it's obviously one fact that you should take. I'm. It looks like the ag plan ratings, it said it received a rating, the rating was generally low. But for the proximity to a P D O. So I think if if this was to go to an application, we'd really need. Some extensive facts laid out um saying this is the rating in this location, this location. Uh you know, the soil grading and that kind of thing to. I think Chad said he wants to revisit the activity.
Yeah.
Again, you've got to go back and talk to them, obviously, and.
Yeah.
Make them feel more comfortable, because right now at this board, based on what the ag committee has given us, there's no way. Consider.
I would be very interested in the ag committee's uh opinion of the sheep and the bees.
Restoration.
In terms of.
Decommissioning.
Yeah.
In the length of time it'd be had a commission for its farmland. Though, if it wasn't used for sheep and bees.
Define farmland, right, that.
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna talk about as part of the operation and maintenance plan that. The 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 maintenance of the facility area or the area within that, this the solar row right area, is it gonna have grazing sheep or. Um pollinating bees on there, does that constitute as active farmland in eyes of the ag and the committee or not? I think that's something that has to be raised.
Right, that's why I asked about the height, because you can still farm somewhat underneath the panel, if. Whatever that crop is.
Yeah, in the southwest, they're deploying, you know, peppers, peppers and leafy greens.
Yeah.
Because they actually need, they need shade there, um uh we haven't yet gotten this far east with that, the amount of innovation comes west. But this is sort of the exact thing I I would like to talk about is that I think the. Uh I guess for like, the the ag advisory committee is 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 looking at a conventional, you know, assessment, whereas we're trying, we are trying to do something new.
Nobody knows better than than we do that it's evolved, this whole. This whole technology and things are happening and in fact, Bob's been working on behalf of the board of the town. I'm doing a lot of research on up the, considering uh amendments to it, and.
Yeah, and if I can maybe jump in on on it, just to. I guess I'll call it idiosyncrasy, your code raised that. There's a lot of sounds, there are a lot of codes, but the interesting thing was, you know, built in right farm periods, but. The definitions were not defined in the law, right, the loss of valuable. It's not, it's not defined in the law, so we have to have this discussion, right, and which.
Because a good thing to have.
Situation.
Probably yes, subjective, subjective for the reason.
Well, it's subjective in terms of the fact that, well, it's not subjective at all, it's very obvious, it's a fact based dis- determination. But the planning board is the one that determines what facts are uh appropriate, I always use as an example. A farmer has a hundred acres and he can't make it, make it work, he can't turn a profit, he's gonna go bankrupt, yeah. Distributed comes along and says, hey, let me put solar on it for fifty acres, that farmer gets continued farming, farming the other fifty. Uh because he's now he's got a stream of revenue, right, that keeps his farm afloat, that's the kind, that's why it's uh not subjective, but. Flexible, but it is still a fact based uh determination, it's also the town of Canada deal where. We have at our fingertips facts about. Um our agriculture, we have a strategic farmland protection, we have uh. So that we have the soils all grazed. So.
Is there any assessments on this land?
We.
Solar assessment, ag assessments?
It's, I mean.
Because there's a, there's a New York, not a nice, I think it is where you get into the ag assessment and you kind of. Got away from uh solar for five years, it's kind of.
Yes, they're both subject to.
Oh, yeah.
Agricultural district.
Right, that you know, if that property, those properties.
Both properties are currently under um tax exemptions for that, we we.
So they're paid back.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh under the terms of our lease, we're all.
Yeah.
We have to. I feel those back. While we're in, once we're in taxes.
That's why I want to hear from the farm.
Yeah, so if you were going to apply, make an application, I think you should, you know, really spell it out. What's going on now, what the graves are, the soils, what? Um, you know, locate them on on the plan. Uh are the farmers, is there any of the land that's gonna remain farmed?
Yeah, so. The the northwest parcel, you know, where the the parcel's around. It's it's fifteen, six acres or so and we're looking at about thirty and then the owner wants to keep. Any sh- outwets for hunting, so I'm not, you know, I I have to have that discussion about whether. The farmer would really stay interested in that remainder in between the woods and the, you're right, and um down at the. Other parcel on ten or thirty, uh we're still, we're we're, I mean, less than half. Less than half. Eight forty five.
Chad, I think it'd also be helpful to the board and to the town to know the the power that you're generating, you said it's going out into this grid. Uh is there any direct benefit to the residents of Canada Bigwell? To this going into the grid or is it just crossing the Victor and Farmington and it's going north to Monroe County and? I mean, I think that's something that we've been talking about every time we see an application is, you know, what is the benefit to the town in the big was bottom of the issue previously, and I think. If that can be documented and justified and stated, uh that would be very helpful to us and to.
Sure, and just just on those two points, right, one is we offer direct savings or net metering credits to. Off the first to town residents, so they will save money guaranteed, it's a guaranteed savings on electricity bills from RG.
Old town or proximity?
Uh, I mean, I I'm flexible on how we do that, right, but it would first be priority.
Planning board members?
Uh, so we start, yeah.
That was a joke.
Just.
I got you, uh that's the first one, second one is uh the current bill from RG, RG is about two million dollars for for the upgrades and. You know, the town won't, wouldn't feel that maybe for a decade, maybe two before, you know, the the growth of the housing market. Says, oh, we have to upgrade these circuits and suddenly, and no one really notices a quarter of a penny change on your electricity rates, but. When RG has to upgrade all the lines, I make the case to Albany, Albany says, okay, yeah, that's improved cost and. Roll it up into everybody's rates and suddenly. Everybody notices. Quarter percent more for a lot of our electricity. So 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 that that is, that is avoided costs, which.
Yeah.
Is very unsexy, but.
Mm hmm.
There's, there's, there's a real benefit, I mean, inflation, I think, is on a lot of people's minds nowadays and. We're guaranteeing savings on.
Okay, we're good, um very informative. So I guess we'll wait and see moving forward.
So I guess my, I guess me entirely. Big a lot of thing and and create a lot of reports, but I guess my uh tactical question is how can I engage with the ag advisory committee such that we can? You know, meetings or have discussions, get reports, I want to ask. Work something here before I come back and.
Uh, well, Kim works with them, Sarah works with them. Maybe once a month. Um, I don't know if they would.
Call Shauna to talk about the best passport.
Yeah, I'll talk with, I'll talk with her.
Sarah's gonna present that.
Yeah, she's staffed that board for a long time, so. Yeah, so we talked to her.
And that's Sarah.
Sarah Reynolds.
Sarah Reynolds, is she like the head of the ag advisory?
She is a staff person that facilitates and organizes that.
Then I guess to the board's record, the uh record we should move that, we did receive a email from a. Concerned resident who lives in that area, so.
Are you able to state what the term with us?
Not good. Not great, okay. Yeah, we'll certainly share with you. Transparency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. Well, yeah, we don't get letters. It is really nice. I'm happy to tell you.
No, out of what's.
Been down that road. Engagement is better than.
Well, it's good to know upfront, you know, what the concerns are and how we address them, that's what we're gonna do. Let's, it starts out tonight, since the beginning of it all, so. Thanks for coming in, sorry I had to wait so long.
This business keeps on going.
Twenty four hours.
It's right. I almost drove down here yesterday.
Yesterday, really?
The the bowling.
Yeah, on that one, Chad.
Great choice to.
Okay. Safe.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, I need an approval on the August ninth.
Meeting.
Do a session minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Make the motion for.
Scott. Scott, Amanda's second. Good job, John, as usual, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, no sharing releases, okay, annual report. Uh Shauna sent it out via email and hard copy in front of you. I think we still cover everything that we have done this year. And I came up with a couple of suggestions for the things we want to do next year, and I should state that. We're not stopping the things that we're currently working on, we're just going to continue to monitor those projects. And as as new new things develop in the portable housing field and five G and something that should be brought to our attention. Uh you're gonna ask that project manager to. Bring it to our attention and for our consideration of the board. Let's go, do. Uh looking forward, I just came up with some suggestions as far as. Along with monitoring the comprehensive plans and the obligations we have to do under the. Plan, a couple other other items. Plan, a couple other, other items. Just making sure that the NRI is a valuable resource that we use in all our applications. Uh, documented. As part of the first things we look at on any application. That you'll notice that I've been asking more, stating more and more, are there any NRI features on your application? And if we can get the applicant and their engineers and designers to consider that upfront. That makes it a lot easier in terms of what kind of, uh, farmland. Restrictions we have. Yeah, so we don't. I did, I'm talking to the, I'm only, I, I serve on the conservation easement team and. I mentioned to Sarah about coming up with some sort of standardized language and this certainly be involved with this as to, uh. Cause it's, we've, we've got these conservation subdivisions, you know, Pierceburg. Uh, where we have conservation easements and, uh, who's gonna maintain it, how's it gonna be maintained? And that's maybe something we should. Standardize a little more. I know we don't, we can't come up with a cookie cutter. Language that would apply to all cases, but, uh, I think we should have some better ideas to. If we create these easements, who's gonna maintain them?
Well, I, I would like to see that codified.
There you go.
Any conservation easement shall be maintained by an H O A, uh, something like that. Cause right now it's every situation is different. Yes.
There's enforcement issues and.
Yeah.
We got sound to it.
Yeah, we wind up sitting here scratching our heads saying, well, who's been maintaining? How's it gonna be maintained? Are they gonna create a? So anyway, uh. And, uh, also, uh, we're all excited about working on the form based code and we'll be doing that. Hopefully more frequently. So, yeah, next one. Uh.
Luckily it's very small. I was just gonna say. One of those four, four thousand.
So does anyone have anything to add to the draft?
No, I think.
No, that's good. Thank you, thank you all.
You asked, does anybody?
Anybody?
Don't ask us if it is. Punchy on a Wednesday.
All right, well, if I hear nothing, uh. Sean, if you could, uh. Put a bow on it, make it so.
Wrap it up, I'll put it, uh, we'll send it to the town board in September.
Yep.
They're meeting early this. On the twelfth. So that's gonna move edge here a little bit.
Like, they're before we meet, yeah, we meet in thirteen.
Yeah.
I won't be.
What, Bob, you were just absiding.
What the heck?
Absence minded.
Actually, you were zooming in.
He was zoom.
He's zooming, right?
Okay, that's the draft report, number four is town board. From town board this time. TBA, special projects, uh, plan, uh, school, training.
Scott and Chuck, anybody else wanna go?
Twenty-eight.
Your kids are gonna be there.
I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna juggle some things.
I would need to know. Will you let me know by Friday?
By Friday, yeah.
Who's the food from there?
Well, I'm assuming they're not gonna cater it from.
Cater it from.
Hey, everybody, here's some McDonald's.
Here's no one's.
Head over to the sandbar.
Right.
It's hard to pay the prices. I put every single person.
Yeah.
Gone there a couple times.
It was nice, but.
Not like.
Okay. Uh, the, uh, train hours.
Hi, Sam, is everybody good?
Did everybody respond? Did Mark get back to you? Cause I know.
Mark has.
Yeah, he had a lot hours.
He did, we, he's all wrapped up, yeah.
Okay. All right, if you could just send the spreadsheet out at some point, so.
Yeah, I just, I think everybody needs to. So you even have more than me.
You can tell.
Carry him over.
You can tell by the way this horse conducts.
All right. Eight, uh, thirteenth, Bob will not be here, uh. We have, uh, another one of those adjustments of the first four of those. I thought it was very apologetic that they had to come in, they know we don't like to see those kind of applications, but. We're gonna see another one, but. Edge beer.
Edge beer.
So, that's Mark's.
That's the information.
Okay.
And then.
Can you send those, you're gonna come back.
And then Shepherd and Rose seventy. Okay, so that's thirteenth and. The, uh, twenty-seventh. Okay. Anyone else have anything for the group?
I'll just make a comment. I sat in, while Zoom, in the zoning meeting and it was, it was good.
Yeah.
Hear. Their thought process and their rationalization and.
I enjoyed, cause you, you can preview what we're gonna say. And you also get, that's why this thing about having a condition about deep restrictions on. That Hickox. That's something they talked about at great length, so just want to make sure we acknowledge the time they spent talking about it. And the ECB certainly. Provide a lot of input on it too, so, yeah, it is good, sit there if you have the time. Thanks for doing that.
So it's amazing, right?
Yeah.
That is nice.
Okay, anything else? Should wait for.
I'm now gonna wait four minutes.
Overtime.
No, sir, I'm making a motion to adjourn at eight sixty-six.
I go into overtime at.
I'll sack. Yeah, that's right.
All favor.
Aye. Thank you, thank you.